I call this meeting to order. Could you please stand and salute the flag with me? I call this meeting to order. Could you please stand and salute the flag with me?
I'm a vengeful request.
I call this meeting to order. Could you please stand and salute the flag with me?
I'm a vengeful request.
I call this meeting to order. Okay, we're back on. Call this meeting to order. Please stand.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Do we have council approval to accept this agenda?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
I'll second it.
A roll call, please.
Mayor Protim Singleton.
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez.
Aye.
Councilman Horn.
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson.
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey.
I also vote aye.
Okay, we'll go to item number two, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Number one, life-saving commendation for paramedic Dwayne Kosmoski and paramedic May Ong. Chief? Yes.
Good evening, council and community. One of the greatest joys in a fire chief's career is to be able to recognize personnel who do things of extraordinary act. And that's exactly what we have this evening. So I'd like to bring paramedic May Ong and paramedic Dane Kosmoski up here. So this is a life-saving commendation for paramedics May Ong and paramedic Dane Kosmoski. On October 14th, 2021, paramedics Ong and Kosmoski were on their way to Cuiya Delta Medical Center with a patient when they came upon a traffic accident at Eldorado and Doris Avenue. Paramedic Kosmoski called in the accident to dispatch, and as he was exiting the ambulance, he observed bystanders attempting to extricate the victim. As he walked towards the vehicle, he noticed the vehicle was smoking and heard crackling noises. He ran back to the ambulance and grabbed the vehicle's fire extinguisher. He noticed that the vehicle was now on fire in the engine compartment area. His attempt to extinguish the fire was unsuccessful. Another bystander handed paramedic Kosmoski another fire extinguisher, and his second attempt was unsuccessful as the fire had become too big to extinguish. Paramedic Ong made sure her patient was okay and said she had to go help with an accident that they had just driven up upon. She made her way over to the passenger compartment and was assisting bystanders attempting to pull the victim out of the vehicle. At this point, the front of the vehicle was fully involved, and paramedic Kosmoski stuck his head into the burning vehicle and saw that the victim's leg was trapped. He was able to free it, and with the help of paramedic Ong and bystanders, they were able to pull the victim from the vehicle as the passenger compartment began to catch fire. They placed the patient on a backboard and began treating the patient until additional resources arrived and were able to transfer the patient to another Kalinga Fire ambulance. The efforts of both paramedic Kosmoski and Ong were instrumental in saving this individual's life. Without their quick action and remaining calm during an intense event, the outcome of this individual could have been much different. Your life-saving actions on this day is to be commended by the Kalinga Fire Department in the city of Kalinga. Larry, can you bring up the picture of the vehicle?
Whoa.
So as you can see, that patient wound up survived without the efforts of paramedic Ong and Kosmoski. That entire vehicle was fully involved and was burning while they were trying to extricate the vehicle. So the certificate reads, "This certificate is presented to May Ong in recognition of your selfless and courageous act of rendering aid in a sudden and unexpected situation on October 14th, 2021, which resulted in preservation of life." And I have a life-saving award for you as well.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Good job. Thank you. This certificate is presented to Dane Kosmoski in recognition of your selfless and courageous act of rendering aid in a sudden and unexpected situation on October 14th, 2021, which resulted in preservation of life. Once again.
Okay, item number two. Item number two, we go to for.
Item number, item number, oh, sorry. Item number two is also mine, and this is swearing in of new fire department employees. If I could get Division Chief Eric Beasley, non-safety EMT Maribel Macias, and non-safety EMT Alicia Sanchez up here. We'll do Maribel first. Maribel Macias, she lives in the city of Tulare. She has three kids and comes from a family of four. She is coming from Selma Hospital Emergency Department as a ED Tech Two. She's been working as an EMT for three years, and two of those years has been at the hospital as an EMT phlebotomist. She has 911 emergency dispatcher experience from Tulare County and also has firefighting experience from Tulare County Fire. She lost her mother in a car accident at a young age, and this is the reason why she works as an EMT. She has a passion and compassion for helping others. Maribel loves Starbucks, all things Disney, and anything that sparkles. The joke around the station is she will bedazzle anything. The person pinning her this evening will be her sister, Oralia Macias. Did I say that right? All right. That's okay. There you go.
Her sister's four, right?
Next up, we have non-safety EMT Ally Sanchez. Ally was born August 12th, 1998. Those who know her will say she is caring, strong, and determined. She does everything she can to meet and exceed the goals she sets for herself. She is drawn, she was drawn to EMS to help people and her community. She has always loved the tight-knit communities that comes with smaller towns. When the opportunity opened to apply with Kalinga Fire, she immediately jumped at the opportunity. She knows this career opportunity can help lead her to her next goal of being a paramedic and eventually becoming a firefighter. In her free time, she loves spending time with her two sons, Lucas and Dylan. She loves to doodle, loves all things Harry Potter and Disney. The person pinning her this evening will be her boyfriend, Eric Cano. Okay. And last, we have is Division Chief Eric Beasley. Eric has spent the last 20 years in the fire service as a volunteer firefighter, career firefighter, engineer, captain, and fire marshal. He has spent most of his career working in the area of fire prevention and has extensive knowledge with the fire code and plan reviews. He has certifications in fire prevention, plans examiner, fire investigations, company officer, and fire instructor. Division Chief Beasley will oversee the day-to-day operations of the prevention division, which will include fire inspections, plan reviews, fire investigation unit, and public education, as well as assist the fire chief with administrative duties when assigned. He is looking forward to getting involved with the community and working to make Kalinga a safer place to work and live. He enjoys sports, sports shooting, outdoor activities, coaching youth sports, and spending time with his family. The person pinning him tonight will be his wife, Amy. She will do the badge, and his son, Jaden, will do his bugles. Let me do that. Let me do the oath of office real quick. If I can get the three of you to stand right here facing me this way. We're gonna do the oath of office. You raise your right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. Any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge. The duties upon which I'm about to enter. You're good. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take about a, about a five-minute break here so everybody can give their congratulations. Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. We're on item number three, citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use a microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up report. Excuse me. Citizens' comments in writing to the city clerk by. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by five o'clock on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record. However, they will not be read. Is there anybody that'd like to speak? Hilda?
Hello, good evening. I am Hilda Crawford. I just wanted to come in to speak and put my two cents in regarding the discussion direction and potential action regarding entering into agreement with the Kalinga High, Kalinga Unified School District as well as crossing guards. It was in passing. It was mentioned that there's, you guys are going back and forth about the insurance. And I just thought, and I mentioned it, my husband is Tom Crawford, he's a school board member, and so I kind of mentioned to him, and he mentioned it to the superintendent. But anyway, to get down to what I'm talking about is in sixth grade, I grew up in Huron, and in sixth grade, we had Safety Patrol. And the Safety Patrol took care of, and the crossing, they were crossing guards, they did the hallways, the uniforms. We, I mean, I remember we had a belt, a badge. And so I thought, well, why can't they just do safety, you know, patrol? The high school kids could learn, earn volunteer hours. They could patrol, let's say, Chaney and Bishop, the middle school or junior high, as I knew it, can patrol their own crossing, doing the crossing guards. And the fifth graders could possibly do sunset and, you know, patrol the fourth graders. I went ahead and researched it, and AAA has a safety patrol program. And the person that I spoke to gave me the name of Joshua Lopez. He's a safety specialist, and he's out of the Hanford office. One of the schools in Hanford, and I'm thinking it's one of the parochial schools, has, does the program. And this way, if they're responsible, or if you can partner, the school can partner with triple, uh, AAA, I haven't spoken to the superintendent yet, but it's just a suggestion. I mean, and as an incentive, may, maybe they could have pizza parties, a monthly pizza party for those kids that really want to volunteer. I mean, I know I got sent to Siberia when I was safety patrol, because I was yelling out of the hallways, and I do the same at the library. But anyway, I just thought this might be something to implement, something to bring to the schools. If you're concerned, I don't know about the streets, you know, the, like Elm Street, I know is busy when the kids are crossing. Um, you know, they come through our, they come like herds of zombies coming through ours, through the library and down the streets, that you can't even, when you're driving down a fourth street, you have to be careful because they're coming as hordes. But, um, just a, just a suggestion, I just thought maybe that if you guys could implement maybe a safety patrol for the elementary high school, that the high school kids could do their own patrolling, but also volunteer and earn those hours they need to earn in order to graduate. It's just a suggestion, it just came to me, because I remember my days in Huron and down the halls in the elementary school, yelling at kids. So, um, anyhow, I just thought I'd bring it to you guys' attention and see if you guys, I mean, I have the name, Joshua Lopez, and he gave me, they gave me the phone number that you could reach him. I don't know if you want, interested in wanting it, but it's five eight seven four six one one. It, he's the safety specialist, and again, it's Joshua Lopez.
And that's with AAA?
AAA, Hanford office, I called before I came to them. Uh, five, well, five five nine, five eight seven, four six one one. And just, uh, putting in again my two cents, the library's up and open, it's running. Uh, we are open Monday through Thursday from nine to seven, and Friday and Saturday from nine to five. We don't have any programs as of yet. Uh, hopefully, the coming year, we can start back with all our programs. Due to COVID and all the, everything that's been going on, we've cut, we've decided not to have any. But I am the outreach specialist there at the high, well, circulation slash outreach specialist, so I just wanted to let you know that we're opening up and going, and it's my job to come give my little two cents worth. But anyhow, just come in, get a library card if you don't have one, come visit our library, and we're open. I always feel that we're the best in town, best thing that Kalinga has to offer is our library. I've been there forty-one years this last month, so, um, I promote it as much as I can. I'll yell at your kids, grandkids, everybody. I have no shame. So anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Hilda. Do anybody else, Scott?
Hello, council, I'm Scott in other than Chamber of Commerce. Um, first, if the library's so good, why she always at my theater? But, um, I made a post this morning, I started going through, looking at our calendar of events coming up, and I gotta tell you, it's a great time to be a citizen of Kalinga, because, especially after the year we came out of, um, there's like fourteen different items going on this, this month alone. I wanted to bring some to your attention. Um, the CHS Drama is presenting Mamma Mia right now, December fourth, or first through the fourth, and eighth through the eleventh at seven PM at the hot, high school auditorium. Kalinga Eagles have their monthly fish fry December third, I don't know if it's Eagles' Nest or Eagles Lodge, but, um, RC Baker Museum, they've been putting on a lot of events, um, very informational and very well put together. And they have one this Saturday, they present the vintage Kalinga featuring Michael, um, Seamus and his incredible stories and photos of the history of our community. It's December fourth, this Saturday at eleven AM at the museum. Um, the Kalinga Huron Recreation Park has their Christmas Craft Fair this Saturday and Sunday, the fourth and fifth, from twelve PM to four PM at Keck Park. They'll be doing, um, decorating cookies, having Santa, pictures with Santa. Um, also, this weekend, Kalinga Elk's Lodge, sixteen thirteen, and Kalinga Chamber of Commerce are presenting the Let Your Light Shine Christmas Parade this Saturday at six PM in the Kalinga Plaza. Right now, we currently have about thirty-eight entries into the parade. Um, gonna be a good time, gonna have living the tape, or live nativity scene, um, carolers, we're gonna have a winter wonderland for the kids with snow, uh, Christmas lights, Santa will be there taking pictures, cocoa and cookies. Also, Kalinga Elk's Lodge is having their hoop shoot contest December eleventh, a week from Saturday, at ten AM at Kalinga Middle School Gym. There are age groups eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve and thirteen, trophies for boys and girls, um, first through third place, you can sign up the morning of the event. Pink Parlor next weekend also has their second annual holiday boutique, December eleventh at ten AM to four PM, Kalinga Plaza by Town Clock. Um, lots of craft vendors and food, about twenty-five, I understand. Um, I had another one, I know the Women's Club is having an event on the night, and this is, uh, I want to say their fifth annual, um, holiday boutique. I didn't get the time on it, but they're, they always put on a great, uh, event, and so if you get a chance to go, it's on a Thursday. Again, everybody's trying to find a date that works with, there are only so many weekends to go through, but if you get a chance, please go. Um, there's also the Kalinga Huron Park and Rec again, they're really stepping up. They, they have a fill the center sleigh softball tournament December eleventh at Kalinga Sports Complex. Um, Caballo Club is having a tax sale Sat- Saturday, December eleventh, ten o'clock to two o'clock, it's open to the public. Um, and then the Kalinga Huron Unified School District Music Department presents Winter Wonderland Concert December fifteenth. Doors open at six at the Kalinga High School Auditorium, free to everyone, and everyone's invited. Um, and again, that's just the next eleven days, and holidays are on the corner, so I just wanted to tell you, it's, um, I'm proud to be the, working with the chamber, and, uh, it's a good time to be in Kalinga, so thank you all.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Nathan Vosper, District Three. Uh, first off, I wanted to, uh, congratulate Levens on his, uh, potential retirement. He's been here a long time, I met him when I was like fifteen, not under the best circumstances. But it was a good time. Absolutely. And then second off, uh, at the last meeting when you guys were discussing cannabis fees, uh, it wasn't really apparent to me from the report of how much you guys did slash those fees, and so I just wanted to, uh, thank Jasmine, you know, and everyone for working on that. Uh, after I listened to your discussion from home with my daughter in one arm, it was apparent that you guys did actually slash quite a bit of those fees, and, um, that's awesome, I think that will keep encouraging businesses to come. Um, the employee fee, I would try and work on that still, uh, and get that lowered, um, but I did want to say that I made a mistake in, uh, what I had said. Uh, for the items I want to talk about tonight is item number six point one, surrounding the, the future police and fire chief selection. Um, I think we need to go, because of all the different transparencies and all the, the people nowadays wanting to have some sort of input, uh, I think that going and doing what larger cities are doing, which is a citywide selection, which, uh, you would bring in people from, and, and we've done this before for different positions, uh, maybe not just this one, where you get people from different agencies to be on a selection committee, and then those people would make recommendations to the city manager and council. Uh, that way, city manager, of course, has the overall approval, but then you would get buy-in, and that's what it's really about, getting that buy-in from the entire community. And so that, just an idea. Um, item number six point two, surrounding the drought and water shortages. I would just like to point out that with fees and rates expected to go up across the board, water, natural gas, and sanitation, um, in some way, shape, or form, it's been a really tough year on Kalinga residents, especially those, uh, that have fixed incomes. I've been watching, I'm one of the few people that probably watches all these agendas, school board, city, and, um, it seems like all year long, it's been raising fees and getting more for services because, uh, that's what it costs. And unfortunately, sometimes that happens, and I'm okay with that, but what I'm not okay with is turning our city into a desert wasteland. And, uh, I believe that's what the Department of Water Resources absolutely wants. When she was here and I was up there, that's what she said she wanted. There's a different person in charge, but I don't think the agenda has changed at all. And so, if the state can make the nexus for water, uh, for the gas tax to fund housing assistance programs, then they darn well be able to say that living in a brown, desolate area affects the mental well-being of its residents. I just seen that the state is only gonna put zero percent allocation, and they're saying that, oh no, we're only gonna fund, uh, health and wellness of people. Well, guess what, health and wellness of people starts with looking at everything around us, it's brown. And i- i- I think it has a mental effect on, on our population, so I'd love to try and make that nexus, especially if they're gonna say that the gas tax can fund, uh, affordable housing. You know, that's a s- large stretch, we should be able to make some kind of stretch like that. Um, lastly, I want to discuss six point three concerning the crossing guards. I totally agree, uh, with Hilda. I would ask that you guys table this issue, maybe discuss it, and then end up tabling it, come back. Um, I did give you guys, uh, provided a copy of the budget. Um, the last budget for the school district, uh, runs in between eight and eleven million dollars, depending on what year you're looking at. Uh, they're only required to keep a three percent reserve, and that's a quite healthy reserve above that three percent. And so I would say that if you're gonna share costs, it should be shared equally across the board, and it, they should share into the liability. I did research, it's not unheard of, in fact, it's, cities right now are trying to get out of the crossing guard game because of all the liability that goes along with it, especially when California has increased rules and laws about what people can sue for, what minimum wage is, all of these types of different things. And so I would suggest that you go with a volunteer system, and that the school is the one that should host that. In fact, at the last school board meeting, I listened to one of the board members talk, and he wasn't really having it until he found out that the school wasn't gonna be liable for it. Well, that's the same type of thing I should hear from you guys, is that why would you guys wanna be liable for it? You know, if someone gets hurt, someone gets in a fight, someone gets hit by a car, we get sued. And let me tell you, all those things happened within the last two or three months across the nation, those things have happened. And so just think about that, when you're, when you're thinking about that, and, um, hopefully, you guys could table it and go back, you know, and work with them a little bit more, and maybe a volunteer program, or at least work into it to share some of the liabilities, uh, that way there would be an even Steven type of cost. I do think that the, oh, and one more thing, I was looking at the, the safe routes to school, and, uh, there was actually, uh, a place in there where ten percent of the funding could be used for such things like, uh, crossing guards and infrastructure that actually wasn't solid infrastructure, but it was things to aid infrastructure, so that might be something you wanna look into as well. But I appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Thank you, Nathan. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we'll go to, um, public hearings, number four. Uh, we have a number one is adopt resolution four zero five three, certifying and, and initial study and mitigated negative declaration with mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the construction segments of three, four, and nine of the Kalinga Trails Master Plan. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to, uh, adopt and certify an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration for segments three, four, and nine of our master trails plan, or actually for the master, within the master trails plan. Uh, the city pursued funding through the Active Transportation Grant Program to fund and design and construct segments three, four, and nine of the Kalinga Use Multitrails Master Plan. Staff, uh, received grant, we, well, the city received grant funds under the ATP grant funding to cover costs related to CEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, which is, uh, required environmental review for all these types of projects, especially when they're state and federally funded. Um, and so implementation of the proposed project requires preparation and approval of an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration. Staff in conjunction with his consultant has prepared the appropriate environmental documentation to satisfy the California Environmental Quality Act as well as Caltrans, um, because Caltrans actually is the lead agency on these types of projects, um, because they are the provider of the funds. And so we're proposing to design and construct and operate portions of segments three, four, and nine of the city's master trails plan, which is an eight point eight mile perimeter trailer, trail, and spur system identified in the city's trails master plan using active transportation program funds. Segment three consists of approximately eleven hundred feet of twenty, of the twenty-six hundred foot segment identified in the city's, uh, master plan in the northwestern portion of the city. The segment runs along the former railroad corridor, and would provide a direct connection between residents on the northeast side of the city and downtown. Uh, segment four consists of about eighteen hundred foot in the northeastern, uh, part of Kalinga, the complete segment identified is in the, uh, master plan extending southwest from the south, southernmost portion of segment three. Um, this segment continues along the former railroad corridor and completes the connection from the north side of the city to downtown, and provides non-motorized access to destinations such as the California Department of Motor Vehicles and the library, City Hall, retail, high and medium housing density. And then segment nine, uh, consists of about seventeen hundred feet of the forty-two hundred foot segment identified in the city's master plan in the southern portion of the city. This segment is between the intersection of Pacific and Forest and the intersection of State Route one ninety-eight and Lucille Avenue. So the trails would be comprised of ten-foot wide paved asphalt between two and four feet of decomposed granite shoulders. Uh, these trail segments would be constructed in, in the north Kalinga from City Sports Complex east to the former rail line, terminating downtown at First Street and between Elm and Forest Avenue. Uh, the city of Kalinga has completed the requirements under the California Environmental Quality Act, and the Kalinga Community Development Department has determined that the said construction is subject to CEQA, and that an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration, M and D, uh, was prepared for the project. And so the Community Development Department circulated a notice of intent to adopt an initial study and negative declaration, and advertised a thirty-day public comment period, which began on September thir- thirteenth, and ended on October twelfth. And so we provided a copy of the environmental document, uh, apologize for all the printouts, because it's probably the largest document in this agenda this night. Uh, and public hearing notices, uh, were mailed to all property owners within three hundred feet of the site, so all the locations, all the segments within three hundred feet, uh, were notified of the adoption of this document. And so in terms of, uh, fa- the findings that need to be fi- found, in terms of certifying an environmental document, is it all required, public notices have been given, the provisions of CEQA have been followed, the provisions, uh, the proposed project will not have significant adverse effect on the environment, and the property project will be, uh, compatible with the existing and future developments of the surrounding areas. So with that, uh, all the documents have been provided, it's, the council, our request is to adopt resolution number four oh five three, and once this is certified, we will send that to the state, and we're gonna be beginning design with a city engineer here within probably the coming weeks, with hopefully construction within the next year.
Counsel, any questions?
I had a question, um, the one that, that goes, uh, from where, I think it's, from, from Cherry to, uh, I believe is around Glen? There's, there's one that goes through there, right, you said?
From Cherry to Glen?
There's the one that goes be, that crosses in between the school farm, like right behind the...
That's on the railroad track area.
Yeah, it's on the old railroad right away, yeah.
Are you guys gonna put lights on there or something? Like, you guys gonna actually do it then?
There won't be, there won't be any lights, no. Yeah, it'll be sp-...
Pretty dark at night if somebody decides to walk and, you know, trip or something.
I think, uh, there are gonna be some segments that are gonna be a little darker. Um, I think the intention is, is that these will be used more during the day, or during, you know, with natural light. Um, it gets extremely expensive when you start adding lighting and infrastructure, uh, to these particular facilities, and most of the time, I don't think a lot of these have lighting. Um, we've even limited some of the landscaping, because our goal is to try to get this at least, and it, it's not that it couldn't be expanded with, with lighting in the future, especially with the solar lights, because the solar lights don't require, um, any kind of like electrical, and, uh, we've purchased some for the wastewater treatment plant that we're gonna be installing out there. Um, but I think from a starting standpoint, to really emphasize getting the actual trail complete is to basically do the, the asphalt section with the DG shoulders, and then I think as we build in the future, to be able to include additional infrastructure, you know, maybe workout equipment, trash receptacles, other types of things. you know, maybe workout equipment, trash receptacles, other types of things that we can include to it, but really trying to get the basis down first and then be able to emphasize and enhance it as we continue.
Another question. You mentioned that Caltrans wants to, or supporting it or.
Well, this is, it's funded through the active transportation grant funding, which there, it's state funds and there's also, there's also a component of federal funds. And so when this, when there's either state funds or federal funds, Caltrans is kind of the keeper of the funds. And so all authorizations for funding, reimbursements, all go through Caltrans. And, but also Caltrans serves as the lead agency under the California Environmental Quality Act. So they are the ones that basically have to, they're the ones that are approving our biological study, cultural resources studies. So they dictate a lot of the studies that are required in order to, in orders for them to be able to agree with the, the, I mean, basically with what we're proposing in order to release those funds.
Because the reason why I asked, because I would really like to see something focused on, I know Ms. Me and Mr. Atkinson have seen the, the bridge, the old railroad. That bridge is like, I mentioned it, a, you know, a big hazard and with their sewer, a sewer line there, a gas line, and I believe water.
I think it's water and gas.
Gas.
Yeah.
And kind of would really want a focus on that if we're going to keep it or knock it down. I've actually already heard that there's a kid that fell into that.
So it is within the trail master plan. It is on private property. And so right now, the city, you know, is not involved in that particular trestle bridge. I know there's been some conversations about it, but I think as we get near those segments, there may be some more discussion about how we, how we may look at that. But as of right now, that is on private property and the city is not necessarily involved in that trestle bridge or the maintenance of that bridge. We just make sure and inspect the utilities that are on there to ensure that we don't have issues with the gas line or the water lines there.
We did make contact. We sent a letter by mail because when we pull up property information, it just gives us a mailing address for the property owner. So we did send a letter asking if we could discuss it and we never got a response.
Any other questions? Is there any questions from the audience?
Does the public hearing run?
Oh, okay. That's, I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to open up the public hearing right now. Anybody like to say anything for or against this?
I just have a question.
Nathan, could you come up here? Thank you.
I'm just curious. I'm sure Sean can answer this. Does part of this include going back behind Sandalwood and around the, the section? Does that, is that the section that meets into Forest?
Yes. So it goes, it'll, it'll stay on the alignment of Lucille as if you cross the street on Lucille, right through that field, and then directly head north to Forest and it'll, it'll actually terminate at Forest and Pacific right at the corner right there. And it'll, then it'll continue back to the, on the south side of, which would be Fox, no, Stein Springs.
Stein Springs. But it will cover Sandalwood. It will go to the backside of Sandalwood. Because I know that that was a really big deal and a lot of people in District Three that are in Sandalwood are actually, we're talking about a public safety issue right here. They're walking right down the highway to get to school and to do shopping. And that's something that, that we had worked on was to make sure that we, we were even thinking, okay, we're going to do it in the front. No, 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 we can't do that. It's too, it's not safe. So we had to go around the backside. So I just want to know if that's going to be included in this.
I'd have to double check on the plan. I can't, I don't recall whether that goes all the way back to the back of Sandalwood. However, there is a project right now that we're working on with Caltrans to actually put a trail segment that we've been, actually, we have funding for, a trail segment from Willow Springs to Merced that's off the highway and safe and it'll be a full trail segment there that connect Sandalwood to the rest of town.
Is that in the, is that, is that in this current?
It's not in, it's not in this project, not in this specific project, it's for specific segments. But, and it's not actually, that segment is actually not in the trails master plan. But that was something that we've been working with Caltrans on to provide that connectivity between Sandalwood and.
But I thought when we did the active transportation plan to begin with, that this, that was included in, into there.
I have to look at the plan.
Because I remember when I was up there, we made sure that that was, it was a big deal to make sure. In fact, between the people coming over the railroad tracks and the people from Sandalwood, that, those were the two big public safety risks, you know, for the people that, a lot of them can't afford to get to school any other way. And then, you know, of course, it would also work into the position area and then into, you know, my area as well and Fox Hollow. But we got to make sure that we get the people that really are going to need it the most involved into these plans. And I remember this was like a $15 million thing to begin with. And so, and, but it gets chopped up into little pieces and these things could take five or 10 years to ever come to fruition. And if council doesn't stay on it, things will get lost. Things will get moved into other places.
Right there. Goes right over to Sandalwood, right there.
Okay, so it does?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Put me on the spot.
Okay, any other questions from anybody? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there anything else? Guys, okay. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 4053?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye.
Okay, we'll go to the consent calendar. We have 14 items on the consent calendar. Is there anything that anybody would like to pull? Is there anything anybody in the audience would like to pull?
I'd like to pull number three because I wasn't here the last meeting.
Number three? Okay, what would you like to know about that one, number three?
The fines, they were supposed to go back towards future water. Now, now that we're rescinding it, how much is the city going to have to pay the state? How much are they getting fined now?
So if the money, if the drought charges are rescinded, the loss in revenue is just over 276,000. And that's what's billed, not what has been paid. And so that was to be set aside for future wholesale water purchases if needed.
And we haven't been fined at all, have we?
No.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
We're, we're, how close are we to our actual yearly limit on our water?
I think we're expected to run out around December 15th.
January 4th now. It, it's fluid.
All right.
Okay, anything else? Okay. If not, I'd like to accept a motion or, for all of them, or how would you like to do it? Oh, I'm sorry, sir?
Good evening, sir.
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Genesis and I'm happy to be here. I moved to Kalanga in 2018 when I got offered the job as a psych tech in Kalanga State Hospital. And I've been happy ever since. So I'm here because of item number five, if I'm not ahead of myself, because you asked if anybody.
For dry cleaning and toys?
Yes.
And pound centers?
Yes.
Okay. What would you like to know?
Yes, so ever since I came to this town, I like to dress up, you know? You look good, you feel good, you treat other people good. It's, it's, you know, a sequence. And come to find out, there is no dry cleaning in town. So I realized the closest one is in Lee Moore, you know? And I've been making that drive and as an entrepreneur, you know, I saw the niche, you know, I saw the opportunity to, you know, present the city or the community, the ability to, I mean, have access to clean clothes without driving and, and ever since I've been on it, I've been on the phone with Mr. Sean. That times when I have locations and he fall through, I've been talking to him now since 2019 with a partner of mine, Ismael Rada. I hope you remember her. She was communicating with you because we were working together at the time, you know? But that didn't work out. But now I have a better location and the, the company in LA, the equipment and installation company that is, will be responsible for installing the equipment. They want me to do everything the right way. Initially, I was doing it on my own, you know, I was, you know, trying to exercise initiative and stuff.
And you want to do it the right way.
Yes. So they now said, okay, we need permission from the city and the owner of the property is, is willing to walk with me, you know? He's a very kind-hearted man. His name is Mr. Rico. He owns the Rico Restaurant in town and is the property behind his property. So I'm here, you know, I need your help, I need your blessings, I need your support. I can't do it on my own. And please consider the approval of the project, you know, because it will benefit everybody, you know? It would, it would be very resourceful.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Stumble, would you like to say anything?
Josh Stumble, I'm actually from out of town. I'm from Lemoore. We've been in business with J and D. Josh was towing since 1977. We've had gotten the opportunity that's come from local CHP AAA that it was time for a little bit of help with towing and roadside service here in the Kalanga area. So we've kind of trying to take the step and same way under the same bill, 5.5, we need to be rezoned out on West Elm for towing and, because I guess it's all under cannabis, correct? Light.
Yeah, light industrial.
Light industrial. So just kind of the wording changed is, is kind of what we're hoping for. We hope to be a staple in the community for a long time to come. I'm young, I'll be around for a long while, so we'll get to meet all of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would you guys like to make a motion to accept the consent or bring up something else?
I'd like to make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye.
Okay, everything passed? Okay, we'll go to item number six. And on, on that item that you guys brought up, it, it did pass for both of you guys. So, so we're going to look at the rezones. You can talk to Sean and get all the information later. Okay, we'll go to item number six, ordinance presentation, discussion, and potential action items. Discussion and direction of the potential action regarding future police chief and fire chief sections. Marissa?
Thank you. This was requested as a future agenda item by Councilman Atkinson, so I'll turn it over to him.
If you don't mind, I'd like to table this until the next meeting. I'm not ready for it just yet.
Can we just table like that? Okay, that's tabled. Okay, we'll go to continuation of the city water conservation emergency proclamation. Marissa? Oh, and discussion and direction, potential action items establishing water shortage, water shortage regulations.
All right, thank you. Mayor and Council, we're, staff's recommending approval of resolution, oh, of a resolution, sorry, effective December 2nd, continuing the city Kalanga's water conservation emergency proclamation and establishing water shortage regulations. The city council at their last meeting requested that staff bring back a resolution establishing a policy for outdoor water restrictions. City council requested options from one day a week watering to no outside watering. And then staff's, and staff's prepared a resolution with those two options in red. So the council will be able to choose from those options or other options, depending on how the discussion goes. Since the last city council meeting, the city has seen a decline in water usage, but is to be expected in the winter months, which typically sees less water usage. As of the drafting, as of the drafting of this report, the city's water allocation with USBR is expected to run out, and I put December 31st, but now it's January 4th. It's all basically day-to-day on how we're producing water. It's unknown what is expected to occur once the city's allocation runs out. The city will continue to take water as needed and under its agreement with USBR, use allocation from, will be basically using allocations of, of next year's water. The attached resolution continues the drought emergency proclamation, including establishing water restrictions, provides the council with two options as it relates to outside watering, including additional restrictions and penalties. The penalties and restrictions are basically reiterations from the existing ordinance, but staff included those just so they were viewable for the council to see, so we understand what the penalties are. I think the only thing that we did was actually increase the, the actual penalties for the water restrictions, if the council so chooses. And so that was the only difference between the penalties that are in the ordinance and the penalties that are in the resolution, that they would have to be adopted by resolution. So basically, option one was no outside watering. So there'll be no outside water use except anytime with minimal amount by a handheld hose equipped in the shut-off nozzle. Option two would basically be the kind of the even and odd, one day a week watering, no watering between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM. And basically, even number may use, may water on Tuesdays, odd numbers and non-residential, irrespective of address, may use it on, may use water on Thursdays. And then no irrigation on all other days, which would be Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. And then some of the additional, additional restrictions that are currently in our ordinance that we would be applying, we would, we would recommend applying is basically that no restaurants or other public place which serves food shall serve drinking water unless requested. Handheld hose washing is prohibited for sidewalks, walkways, driveways, parking areas, patios, porches, and verandas. And then decorative fountains must recirculate water. And those were just kind of additional regulations in our stage two water regulations, our restrictions that we incorporated in here. And then all, and then the proposed penalties, which would, I, they think they're just basically a little bit higher than what they were before. So for a first offense, it'd be a hundred dollar, the first offense is typically a, a warning. But in this, in this case, it would be a hundred dollars. The second violation, 500, and then the fourth violation, a thousand dollars. The first violation, we could, if the council so chooses, to make it a warning, which has been done in the past. So at least it corrects the action in terms of making sure someone's either watering on the right day or not watering at all, based on what the council chooses. And then we can go down the line from there in terms of penalties. And then there's obviously additional, other additional remedies when you have negligent water use after a third and maybe fourth time that we've had to try and remedy the situation, where we can place flow restricting devices on the water, we can lock off the water meters, we can remove the water meter, and we can also shut off the water connection if it gets to that point. But obviously, that's a last resort in this kind of situation.
I got a quick question to that.
Sure.
Can you technically do that with a family?
I would, yeah.
Pulling the meter and stopping the water altogether? Can you do that?
I mean.
California especially.
Yeah, for, for household use, you cannot. There, I mean, there's about a year's worth of prohibitions on that before you can actually shut off household use. There's no prohibition on the outside use, though. You'd have to, it would have to be segregated somehow.
Go ahead, Sean.
So with that, that, yeah, that's the, some of my, and then basically, option three would be any other approach the council would like to take. We can amend the resolution, so it goes into effect. So I think one of the recommendations from the council or the request from the council was really to kind of look at whether we go one day or no outside watering. And this would be just right now until the council decides to make a change as it starts to warm up or we get more information from the state in terms of what our water situation's going to look like coming in 2022. So I'll leave it to the council to.
Yeah. I'll, I'll start it off. Just on, using what we've had in the past, I, I would like to have a warning for the first one because a lot of people don't know it until they, they find out about it and we, we contact them. That, that's what happened the last time we did it. So I would rather give everybody a warning. That way they know and that way they can't say after I didn't know, you know, after we give them a warning.
Do we have a database for that?
Pardon me?
Do we have a database for who we give warnings to and who we don't?
Yes.
Yeah, it was, I think back in 14 when we were enforcing water restrictions, we were using kind of like a spreadsheet that basically, when we were writing down addresses, we would identify that and notify the property owners or the tenants.[1779.88] And then it was documented, so then when they went out and caught God again, if they saw the same place, then they already knew that they had been issued a warning.
Yeah, and I would also like to uh uh see the one day of watering instead of no watering at all on the outside, cause we are a gray city right now and um I tr- I'm trying to keep my grass as green as I can with just what I I have cut down as much as I could and one day a week is gonna be even harder, so um I would rather see us try to keep it a little bit green if we could. And so you guys can go from there.
Are we, are we keeping track on like, uh, all right, for example, I'm gonna use myself as an example. I got a two hundred dollar or a hundred dollar um drop charge. I didn't get in the, I didn't get in the summer when I was using less, like, you know, less water, but now I got it when I'm using even more, less water. You know, so how, how is that? Like, how do you guys keep track o- of that? Like, how is it, because I got a drop charge using less water.
They go by your meter.
How is it that I get a drop charge with less water? Like, I don't, my backyard is dead, my front yard is dead.
You have a, can you expand to him, you have a um a minimum amount you can use and anything after that, you get charged?
Yeah, the way, the way the drought charge was said, it was said at the, you know, anything over thirty thousand would receive, and we haven't talked about this in actually a while now.
Right, exactly.
But. On the, on the.
And remember, the the reads that you, the drought charge you received would have been almost probably two months prior usage. So it'd been, and so basically, the way that everything's read, it's almost a month and a half behind in terms of when you get the bill and compared to when you actually use the water.
Right, right, cause um.
Three times.
It's just, it, that's why I, what I'm, that's why I'm using myself in it, using myself, because I also got an email about this elderly couple that didn't realize they have a leakage and now their bill's eight thousand dollars, I don't know.
I'm.
And and how would the city let it go that without giving them a warning? It's, it's.
Well, it's, it's based on the read.
I mean, no, I got an email, but I also like started thinking about my bill that I reduced, and I, it's a family of three. Reduced dramatically, like, everything, I don't got no backyard or no front yard, it's dead.
Well, Larry and I can look at it, we can, we can go over it with you if you'd like to look at the bill.
Like, how do you guys keep track with the misunderstanding of numbers or something like that? Because I don't know, I don't understand how you'll get a drop charge if if the person, the individual basically does it, their job. And and I checked all the sources of where's the leak, I don't got no leaks in my, in my house or nothing. And, you know.
Yeah, we can look at it.
Yeah, we're, we're a family of three, so it's, it's.
Typically, it's the outside irrigation that has.
Exactly, and I want nothing.
Yeah, they helped me out, Larry and uh Sean helped me out and explained it a lot to me and actually showed me a lot of stuff, so.
I got cactus outside, they, they don't use water.
Mary, would you like to say something?
So I just want to point out too, just so that no one's confused, the council did approve rescinding the drought charge. So I think it's still good to meet with Sean and Larry if you want to understand it, but they're gonna be rescinded anyway. So anyone who had a drought penalty charge, they'll be rescinded. Within the language, it says if you don't, if you've paid your drought penalty charge and um you would like a refund, you have thirty days to request a refund in writing. Otherwise, it just gets credited to your utility account. So um I just want everybody to understand that, and then um that's all I had.
Mary, would you like to say something?
Okay, Mary Jones. I have two things. First of all, the penalties that you have proposed here are up to four times what they were in your most recent language. The most recent language that your code specifies is two hundred fifty dollars for the fourth warning. Now it is a thousand, I'm just, I'm just saying that's a significant increase. My other concern is, goes along with Manny, Mr. Ramirez. Uh I have the community garden. I literally have not put one drop of water in the garden since June. Everything is dead. We somehow managed to rack up a bill of over a thousand dollars because someone is using water, but it's not on what's growing there, cause there's nothing but very, very little. There's no way that I can set somebody up to see who's stealing water, which seems really petty, but that's the only thing I can come up and check, check with the meters. And meanwhile, I'm stuck with this massive water use. Normally, we spend between eighty to a hundred and twenty dollars on our water. And normally, I pay for it, cause we don't have money for it. And I, you know, I don't have money. I, you know, and I need my kidneys, so I, I, I want to know what, what, what do I have, what options do I have? And also with the water, with the penalties and stuff, uh if someone else is watering the garden, am I going to be the one that's penalized because I'm in charge? Like, like if somebody left the water out and it's running down the street and we get nailed?
That's correct. So it's the account holder. Um the other thing that's difficult is like with the example that Councilman Ramirez um provided with a couple having an eight thousand dollar water bill, some of that may have been drought charges. But um once the ci- once the water is used, the account holder is responsible for the water, once it goes through that meter. So the city can't say, well, we're just gonna write off eight thousand dollars or a thousand dollars, because then you're basically taking that money from the other ratepayers because we, we're not a for-profit business where we have profit that we can take it from.
Except that part of, part of my charges were because it was over the drought amount.
Right, so then you'll get that amount, if that was paid, that will be credited to your account.
I didn't pay it. Um and then the other thing was, uh is there a way that a, that a resident can turn, completely turn the water off so that only they can turn it on? There's some, something that I can.
I'm looking at Eric, cause he's sitting in the back, I don't know if there's a way that you can lock it out.
You're my neighbor.
Yeah, the proper one wants to lock or have a meter locked out, you can, you can just request it to be locked out and then they'll.
But I want to be able to use it, I just don't want anybody else to be able to use it. I mean, unless they're my good buddies. Is there, there's no way I can do that?
The only way you'd be able to do that is to put a secondary valve beyond the meter on your property, that's the only way you can do it.
Lock?
Yeah.
Okay, I need to talk to someone later.
Sean, Nathan?
So during the drought time, uh we had a group of, I don't know who it was, but they were going uh door-to-door and they were slicing the valve stems on, on tires in Fox Hollow. I know there's, were police reports to back that up. And not only were doing, they doing that, at nighttime, they came around and turned on everyone's sprinklers. So I got twelve thousand gallons of usage in one night. And that, there is a way, there is a, uh, there is something that when it's used and it's not used at the, at what it's supposed to be used for, I forget what the term is, but basically, if it's just going down the street, then that's not used for what you intended, and so there's a name for it, and I forget what that name is, but there is a way that the city can write off that water, just like it, it, it's a name, it's some kind of usage, and I, uh, forgive me, I don't remember what it's called, but um I felt like, wow, I'm a victim here. And not only was I a victim, they, because I had to replace the valve stems on my tires, but then I had to pay an exorbitant fee to the city uh for that excess use of water. Um but I will say that what really helped me out during my water usage was having the city come and install that special meter. Uh I don't know if that's rolled out, uh it was during a trial-based program, but what that meter does is it lets you detect leaks. And I had a leak that was only, they said it was what, two gallons, two gallons an hour? And it was just a drip. I was like, oh, that's no big deal, no, it was two gallons an hour, made a deal and my, my, it knocked my bill down by like fifty bucks getting that fixed. And so I would suggest anyone who can uh to try and get onto those meters if the city has, is getting ready to roll them out. But that's just my suggestion.
That was, that was one thing I meant to ask too, if I could just get one of those little things that, to put on my, the garden meter, I can set it so the phone tells me when the water's being used, and I could even go over and catch people. So if I could get one of those, that'd be super duper.
Eric's um nodding his head yes.
We, we just took delivery on a few more. Uh we did actually max out on what we had for the trial. We do have a few more, but we have to make sure we have all the meters to be able to put the endpoints on. Um and we did, as the council recalls, we applied for a Bureau of Reclamation grant that if awarded, I think Larry just told me today, I think it's a little over a thousand or thirteen hundred um of these meters that we'll install over a period of about a year and a half. Um so yeah, we're, we're working on an im- uh implementation, but there's a fifty percent match on these, and so my guys cannot handle installing endpoints every day, all day. I don't even think there's enough hours in the day to install four thousand in a year, so. Um it'll be a slow, it'll be a rollout, we're gonna apply for this grant every year, but um we'll make an announcement on our Facebook page, hopefully soon, um once we know how many more we can subscribe to. Larry's gonna work on a form online, so people can sign up online, and then we can get those installed on people's meters. But we have about probably twenty, how many do we have on there now, Eric, but? About twenty or twenty-five that are already installed in the city, um so we've seen good results on them already.
Yeah, we have, okay, awesome. Okay, um just for a second, I'm gonna have um Marissa read the proposed penalties one more time before we vote on this, and so everybody understands.
Any water customer determined to be guilty of a first-time violation shall be issued an infraction punishable by fine of not more than one hundred dollars. For a second violation during any period of declared water conservation emergency, an infraction punishable by a fine not more than five hundred dollars. For a fourth violation during any period, there's missing a third. For a fourth violation during any period of declared water conservation emergency and infraction punishable by a fine of not more than one thousand dollars and a placement of a flow restrictor. In addition, the city may discontinue water service.
Okay, now, what do you guys think about that? Do you think it's too harsh, or?
No, we're in the worst water crisis we've ever been in our lives.
We are, yeah.
It's not difficult when you get the first notice as a warning, and the second one's only a hundred bucks, and then you have to work really hard to get to a thousand dollar, I mean, you gotta work for it, so that's my opinion.
I agree, I mean, the, the optic is not to receive money from the citizens, it's to stop using so much water. I mean, it, we've, we've been here before and more likely, we're gonna be there again. It is what it is, the valley's always gonna be dry, no matter how you look at it, we're not gonna get any water, any free gifts. So it's up to us to protect us. And if you want to keep your yard green and you're gonna have to pay that fine, I mean, it should be the deterrent is what we're looking at giving you, to deter not to do that, not to say it's too much. Cause if it's five bucks for over-usage, who's not gonna use it until it comes out dry? I mean, so it may sound stiff, but it's to benefit us in the end. I mean, cause the decisions we make are gonna affect the community. And when we make a bad decision, we have to eat that up, that's a bad decision. But we're just trying to get everybody to cut back on their water usage. And for those that have the situations where it's, 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 it's a bad situation, like uh Vossberg, it is, it is what it is. It's a bad situation that he's in, but we're, we're not out to get him, you know? I mean, we're just trying to curb the usage of the water, I mean, this is winter. We're hoping, praying for rain, snow and something else, but we're, we're not like Dubai, we can't buy that stuff.
Is there, um, I know we get all these grants, is there a way that we could get a grant where we supply showerheads that, you know, won't use that much water? Um something like that, a coaching pamphlet where it says, hey, you know, these are the kind of faucets that are censored, you know? Uh it's something like to coach our citizens that, hey, you know, there is, there's a, there is certain things that you could do to conserve water instead of just, I mean, um, no, I, I agree with the, with the whole thing, but I would like to see a, a kind of coaching pamphlet of things that we could actually do a- and send out to our community that, you know?
Yeah, we've had those before, and the, our problem isn't, isn't the house usage. It's the, the grass use, the, the grass and scrub usage, I mean, most people uh can get away with, you know, just a regular, if you can take two or three showers or, you know, whoever, how many you have in your house, you know? You're not just gonna limit yourself to one shower a week, you know? I mean, we don't want that, nobody wants that, so we want you to live normal and everything and, but there, we have in the uh past had programs where they give you the showerheads and, and uh the things you put on them, the nozzles on the outside too, they're aerators, and you can, you can go smaller on that. And there, I think there are grants out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're also, and we're gonna be coming back with the council, uh, you know, with some discuss, cause we're gonna have to continue this water discussion, because this is not, it's not getting any better. DWR is making announcements about how dire the water is, which the state didn't really talk about the drought much last year, uh or this year, I guess, the water year. Um but we are federally contracted, so it may, it's gonna be, it may be worse. Um but we're gonna continue those conversations back in January, we're gonna come back to the council, continue the conversations with approaches that how we're gonna address this water year coming in, coming in in March, as well as look at things that we could potentially can do to help soften the blow. Um and so those are, and those are exact things that we're, we're thinking of. Grants, it's not gonna solve the immediate problem, unfortunately, because you can't get funding and expect to spend, and be able to spend it. It's taking six months to eight months just to get an agreement from the state, once you're awarded for a grant. Um but there are, there are things we can look at, but as the mayor mentioned, it's outdoor water use. And one of the things that Larry and I even talked to today is that we're gonna try to put together some type of video or some type of narrative that really lets the citizens know and kind of have perspective on how much outdoor watering impacts the usage in our community, where, you know, it's not, it's not necessarily the indoor. I think we've done a lot over the years to really be conscious about what we do indoors, but it's really hard to let that green grass go. And so I think it's, it's the outdoor use, and we saw that, and even I think people that have put their meter, put those smart meters on have seen the big spikes in their graph as the days that they water. And so, or you have a leak. But I think those are the two big key things that we're gonna take away from this, is the outdoor watering and the leaks that we really work on. And that was the biggest, you know, narrative that we did in our grant for the smart meters, was the fact that we can detect leaks and we can notify residents if they have a leak, even if they don't have the app installed, we can notify them. So I think that's really the big key, but we're gonna put out some education, hopefully, and try to, you know, educate the residents in terms of what the actual impact is of outdoor watering.
If, I mean, this is just, I mean, I don't, out in space, but if there's a way that for the future twenty years, ten years, whatever, that there could be some brainstorming of Kalinga actually building a slough or something where, I don't know what the laws are to catch the water from the creek, if there ever is another time where Kalinga actually gets these creeks flooded like crazy. Would there be any way that we could do something like that? I mean.
We'd have to see, but I haven't seen the creek blow in two years. I think from a feasibility standpoint, it, it's not cost-effective, and unfortunately, it's just.
I mean, I'm, I might be wrong, but I think in like nineteen seventy-something, where it was a big old flood.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, right, they didn't re, reroute to, to the Ellen Farm?
Yeah, all, all the water evaporates down to the ground.
Oh, yeah, but I'm, I'm just, it just, it, it kind of got me, because the, the last time we had a big old storm, there was a farmer going to Fresno, where the water collects right there, going to Kerman on one forty-five, had like five, seven pumps pumping all that water and, and water trucks that just stands there. I talked to him, he said, this helped me grow my alfalfa. And I, just to collect it, and I'm just kind of throwing it out there, I mean, ten, twenty, thirty years from now, I mean, I would just like to leave a platform that we can maybe do that. I know it evaporates, but we've had those times that that creek has ran.
Yeah, they, they've tried to get the state to have more, more water um deals and the state won't do it, so. And with the earthquakes around here, it's even harder to make it like that, so. Nathan?
Okay, so I just have one more.
We heard about Sean talk about how much of a difference those smart meters make. So why don't we spend some of that uh, that uh ARPA money on our infrastructure and hire outside people if our indoor people don't, we don't have enough people to do it. Uh I am one hundred percent convinced that if we get those meters on people's houses and they can actually see what their usage is, see, cause right now, they can't even see what their usage is. I mean, not day by day, when, as soon as I could see that usage, you're exactly right. Soon as I seen those spikes go up like that, I was like, oh, I'm gonna lower my stuff on those days that I'm watering. So you could use some of that ARPA money, hire some of the outside folk if we don't have enough folk inside to do it, and get those meters rolled out as soon as humanly possible. Use it to purchase those fifty-fifties on those meters, and then use that as a, as a mitigating factor, because then people at least know what the water usage that they're using is. And then absolutely, guess what else it will let the city also know? So it, because I think it's a twenty-four-hour thing, it's not instant, but. Is it fifteen minutes? So the whole thing with the drought thing you guys are talking about, I'm sitting here thinking to myself, wow. So with what you're passing here, the city's gonna be able to know, because I have the smart meter, when I'm using that water. Right, see Sean over here? Yeah, right, so I'm the only one, me and twenty-five other people are in that boat, to set up ourselves in the Big Brother deal. Let's set up everybody else in that too. Uh it's just a smart thing, that way that we could get the usage down, that's all, so, that's just an idea, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, sir? Okay, sir? Sean, you talk too much.
My name is Tom Dominguez. I'm gonna be the bombardier here, and I'm gonna drop the bomb. This is what you're tap dancing around, and nobody said it, but I'll say it. You're gonna have to ban outdoor watering. That's where this is all going. Thank you.
But not yet.
It's true. I think it'll come from the state first, though.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, too. I mean, we've tried to go ahead of the state, and look what happened. It didn't work, so I think we oughta just do what we're gonna, hopefully do it tonight. Gentlemen, what would you like to do? We've talked about this for a while now.
Mayor, if there's a, Marissa was correct in the order. So in the attachment, it goes, the penalties go from first, second, to fourth. And so if you're gonna adopt any of the penalties, we would just ask you clarify that for first, second, to third.
Okay.
And I think the warning was gonna be the first. So then that fourth will actually be the fourth. I think all the other, the two and three need to be pushed down, or one and two need to be pushed to two and three.
And be three.
Because then warnings would be the first defense.
There would be initial warning.
Yeah.
And then the first penalty would be 100. And then the second penalty, the second violation would be 500, and the third violation would be 1,000.
Yes, yeah. And I can work with the clerk on getting those amended after the meeting.
Gentlemen, is that what you would like to do? And do we have a motion for that?
And just to clarify, we're doing one day a week watering, correct? Because I think Mayor was the only one that mentioned it, but I just wanna make sure that's what's being proposed.
Anybody like to say anything else on that?
I mean, I think no watering's gonna happen eventually. I think it's gonna happen real soon. But I think the state's gonna come down with that before us. If we don't do something, it's gonna cost the local economy quite a bit because a lot of people are gonna be paying for their water and not for anything else. So option two's fine with me. So I'll make a motion for option two and the penalties the way they are, one, two, and three, as were ready to us.
Okay, option, option two is a one-day-a-week.
One-day-a-week, yeah. Warning first.
And the warning first.
Yeah, sorry, got it. Warning first.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that for the audience, so they'd see that. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motion and second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Motion carried 100%. Okay, we'll go to item number three, discussion, direction, and potential action item regarding entering into an agreement with the Klinga here on Unified School District for crossing guards.
Thank you. So this item's on here for discussion. The direction from the council at a previous meeting was to look at moving forward with crossing guards, but the goal was to have them be employees of the school district. The discussion was previously that both the school district and the city would share the cost. So there'd be a total of six crossing guards with the city essentially funding three and the school district funding three. And so I did meet with the superintendent and we discussed it. And there's no one within the school district that is trained in traffic control to oversee and train the crossing guards. And her goal would also be that if we had crossing guards, they had police department-issued radios so that if they witnessed something while they were performing their crossing guard duties, they could immediately call. And so that's on here for discussion, if you would like to move forward with the crossing guards.
Is there any way we could still do that and still share the cost?
That's how it's.
We would, we would teach them, I mean, through the police department, right?
Well, that's how it is written currently, but they would be employees of the city. And the council's goal last time was to make them employees of the district. So the way that it's attached as a draft contract is we would employ them and the district would pay us for half of the bodies. What I interpreted your interest to be at the last time this was discussed was flipped. That they would be employees of the school district and then we would pay for three to the district.
Now that we have Ms. Crawford with idea, can we, you know, the plan kinda opened up a little bit more with AAA.
You guys can do whatever you want. That AAA program sounds like a great idea. That wouldn't be something that we would do. That would be something that the school district would need to do because there are students and we don't have control of students. So we can share that information with the school district. I know Mr. Crawford's here. But I can reach out to the superintendent and share that information if that's the desire of the council.
If we did go with the AAA plan, it still doesn't solve the issue with crossing guards? Because you wouldn't have anybody out on the street to get the kids across the street?
Okay.
So I'm totally against them being a city employee. I don't wanna hold the liability for it. The city, the school's sitting on a ton of money right now. I mean, I didn't even know they're sitting on this much money. Otherwise, I wouldn't even voted for it to begin with. So I'm, absolute no vote on this.
Well, gets me as we're talking about kids' lives and stuff here, so. I don't care whose insurance pays for it, if there's a problem. I was a crossing guard out there last year, and it was needed. I mean, a lot of the kids will walk out in front of the cars or people don't even pay attention. I mean, it was hard stopping those cars sometimes. And I had a great big sign, and I was the only one out there for a while, so. But we ended up stopping that after the COVID started. And I was a volunteer out there, too, but the need is there and it's great. And, and I don't think we need kids out there. I mean, when I, when she was talking about the crossing guards, I was, I was one of those crossing guards right there, too. And I actually did a crossing guard over there by the Cheney School right there. And I had the white, white thing and all that stuff. And we actually, in those days, we actually went out there and stopped the traffic and stuff. But with the people nowadays, I don't, I don't see kids going out and trying to stop cars. It's, it would make it dangerous. I mean, I mean, we did it, but, I mean, things have changed a lot. And the cars are gotten a lot faster and people are kinda crazier, too. And so I just wanna see somebody have the liability on it. If we could, is there any way we could share liability?
We can look into that. We can go back and meet with them again and have the city attorney maybe draft a contract that has language regarding shared liability and present that and see if that's something they'd be interested in.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's true. And then maybe have some, we'll talk to some parents and maybe go to the school board meeting, too, and help our cause and stuff, so. But I think it should be, be looked at. And I don't wanna wait till the end of the year to do this. I think we need it right now.
We should probably be more than happy to train anybody, if maybe, but that's.
Yeah, they worked really good with me and stuff. They gave me the sign and stuff and showed me and told me, you know, what not to do and stuff, so. Worked out good. And they, they were around, too, if I needed somebody. I didn't have a radio at that time, but they were, they were right there close if I needed them. I had my phone. So Mary?
Mary Jones, I hesitate to speak for the school district. But I, I know Mr. Crawford's here, but he's not here in any sort of official situation. And I would just like to remind everyone that there is no entity that is rolling in money. And the school district has been given a lot of money, just like the other school districts in California. But most of that money, or there's, are a lot of programs that encumber those funds. And there are non-funded mandates that the school district has to follow. For example, testing all the students for COVID when they need to have that test done. Parents aren't paying for that. They just eat it up. And if they don't have a mask, they sound like little tiny things, but those guys have added up to, you don't know how much. And they've done incredible stuff like the, I don't know if I'm gonna use the right words, for the heating and air conditioning. They've put the top kind of filtering system for the air in all of the classrooms. So not only are they all functional, but they're at the top level to keep the kids safe and the teachers safe. And they have to continue doing that sort of stuff. So there's the state mandates that are just constant. And I know as a former teacher and knowing about the budget of the school district, they don't have any more money than you do. So don't think that they're just gonna get that to deal of a lifetime. I think it's a great partnership that you should continue to approach as a partnership.
Right.
And if, if, if people are running over people and, like we were talking about already this year, I don't think student volunteer helpers are gonna be able to toe that line. They don't even respect authority, let alone some kid with a whistle on his neck.
Thank you.
I'm looking at the over-three-year period. The reserves don't change very much, so it looks like they're sitting on it. Maybe, if you wanna say something?
A lot of that.
Reading this wrong?
Name changes reserves.
Yes.
It cannot touch them.
Yeah, a lot of that might be COVID.
Eight point four million is what it goes.
Yes.
Like we did. Yes, sir. We'll get you in a second.
So. It is true, they have to maintain those reserves. They're actually only required to maintain 3% of the reserve. And this is a ton more than 3%. And they have not changed very much. These reserves have been in place for a little hot second. And they're expected to stay in place until 2023 with this year at 11,796,000, 2022 of 10,800,000, and 2023 of 8,400,000, which is almost twice as much as you guys got. And here's the thing, I don't know if you guys listened to the board meeting last time. Let me tell you, at least one of the board members wasn't even interested in doing this because of the liability. That baffles me. You're a school board member. Why is the heck is the city here trying to eat up all this liability when the school board, one of the members at least? I can't speak for the rest of them because I didn't hear what all the rest of them had to say, but I can tell you, one of them directly was like, nah, why would we do that? We're not, why, is the city gonna hold liability? And amazingly enough, I think you guys should actually listen to what was said at that meeting because I think you guys will be quite a bit surprised. But I would say the school themselves should be the ones taking the lead on this project because they're the ones that are to getting, they're the ones that have the school. Now granted, we all wanna make sure the kids are safe. That's 100%. We wanna make sure of that. I would totally down with the city being a shared partner into this. But it really baffled me to listen at that board meeting that at least one of them was not even interested in this. And so I would say that you guys should really look at this and say, hey, are there alternatives? Or at least table it to let her go back and, and talk and say, hey. Because the way that it sounded like they were all on board as long as the city was taking the liability. And so to me, that's just not fair. Because if, if, if somebody, the insurance isn't gonna be the thing. It's gonna be the person that gets hit by a car that says, hey, your employee was negligent and I'm suing you for half a million dollars. I'm suing you for a million bucks. That's gonna be the deal. And then lastly, for these police radios that they're talking about, I hope we're not talking about giving them the $7,000 radios because those are the ones the PD's switching to, anywhere from $4,000 to $7,000 per radio. So I don't know if the, maybe chief knows if they would get an older radio that would still communicate with the system or would they get the newer one that would, you know, cost a ton of money? But no matter how it is, this is city funds, city finances, they have their funds, they have their finances. Please look out for our end of the deal.
Yeah, I don't think it's the city's responsibility to provide this kind of service. I think the school board should be providing it. When we look at what have we done for the school so far, say for outside school, right? What was that? How much did that cost? Two million? I know it was grant-funded, but what about the empty lot across the street from the high school? We gave that to the school, didn't we? I'm seeing a pattern developing.
Sir?
Yes. I wanna thank Mr. Sean, me and my partner, new partner, Ms. Kelly. I texted her and I told her the bill passed, and that's, that's a big deal for me. That being said, I was a security guard for seven years in a casino. Then my ambition was to be a cop, apply for sheriff, correction. I didn't get picked, but God knows why, right? But I'm a psych tech now, which is, which is a blessing, too. And part of our job as a psych tech is to protect children. And that being said, I'd like to volunteer, you know? I mean, granted, there's bipartisan theory and the whole decision-making and the whole financial issue. I get paid really well as a psych tech to volunteer one or two days of my days off. Please allow me the opportunity to help because, yeah, this is my show of appreciation and I would like it to be considered, you know? I don't mind volunteering out there because I'm a proactive kind of person, you know? If there's an opportunity to prevent harm to children, I'd rather take that opportunity than to fight the criminals in the hospital. You know, by then it's too late, you know what I'm saying? And yeah, please, that's what I wanna say, and I'm willing to start today, you know, so put that in writing and.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got a question. Is there any, is there any reason why the teachers can't volunteer? It's only, it's just only a short period of time beforehand and a short period of time afterwards. Just to volunteer, unpaid.
It would be up to their union, just like having your city employees do volunteering. It would end up be, you know, is, you know, and they'd be having to work it out, that part on that. The other thing, just like you guys have money that's given to you, you have strings attached to it, okay? Yeah, there might be things that, right now, we may have some money, but a lot of times, it's one-time money. You know, we can't go back and fund teachers with it and expect it to cover those, those costs just like you guys hiring a city employee, you know, with, with some money. But all of a sudden, if it dries up, you know, just like this water deal, it's gonna, you'll end up having to cut costs someplace.
They don't normally do.
Yeah, so, you know, but I still, I was brought in a little bit, maybe in the middle of this year. But this is the first time I've really been talking this last time about the crossing guards and stuff. You know, and I feel it should be a common between the two. Where, where were these kids, you know, that were hit at? Were they at, around the school? No, they were off from the school. You know, one was at the fifth.
Master kid was hitting a crosswalk right in front of the school.
School, okay.
And there was somebody there monitoring it. And they still didn't spot the person from running over and leaving.
But that's where I'm just trying to say, some, some parts of the city are too, that where they got hit, too. That where do we end up, you know, monitoring those, those type of things? You know, that's, you know, what we just need to go into this discussion. You know, and just be able to see where the money is that we can do. We can try and find out different avenues just like that and just different programs that might be out there that, that might be able to handle this safety problem and be able to handle that. But that's, but hopefully, you know, we can just work together.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Crawford has a, has a point. Chief Levin, you know, mentioned that they're, they're willing to train. One thing that brings me to mind, you guys had the explorer program right before? You guys did. So let's just say something would happen to one of the, the city would be liable, right? Why can't we get an explorer program again, train these kids and they could be community servant?
Our liability and insurance will not allow us to place minors as crossing guards. So they would have to be, they could be explorers, and I think the explorer program goes up to age 20-something, but we never really had very many. So between 18 and 21, we could ask them to help as a crossing guard. But it may not align with their school schedule because if they're.
They're also governed and insured to the Boys, Boys Scouts of America, so that would be something that we'd have to check into them to see if they even cover the liability.
Yeah, I mean, we have to. If this is something we wanna do, we have to look into, like, not blaming the school, their liability or us liability. My care is, of course, like Mr. Vosberg says, it's about the child. He's not taking anything away about the children. But we do have to come up, the city's growing, and there's a lot more younger kids, you know, driving out there. And like I heard a mention about fast cars now, they're faster. Kids are getting out there and they're not looking. We don't want, we don't want, I don't wanna see. to see another child get ran over. And we could get some kind of, some kind of um, agreement. And I know, I know the, the liability is a big factor in this. But I just don't want it to be a, a battle between, between oh, it happened in your, in your district or it happened in the city, city district.
So, if it's, if the council is interested, um, I can look at cities like in Kings Tulare and Fresno County who have crossing guards. Are they city employees? Are they school district employees? To give you a better idea to bring back and then also reach out to the school district and have the city attorney work on some language that would be shared liability if that's something you're interested in. And that's just an idea.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, I think that'd be good too. Yes, sir.
I don't know if this is uh, something maybe you guys have looked at. I'm new to the community, like I said. Uh, but um, what about a private sector? Uh, whether you guys bring it to table or however you want to train them, do maybe that way and then as the money comes, either the city and the school share the liability or you guys come to an agreement on who's gonna pay a certain percentage on it and just outsource it.
Like security guards or something like that if they did it?
Something like that.
Yeah. We, we could check into that too. So.
I mean, because the number one thing we want to do is protect the child.
Right.
Obviously, everybody agrees a hundred percent. It's just about going about that is gonna be the big struggle between the two entities. And if you're looking at money, that's always gonna be a question. Everybody's always looking at everybody else's pocketbook to see who can be the funder for this one. I mean, but I think if the city's willing to pay half, I mean, that should give the incentive to the schools to say, hey, we're trying to help out here. We don't have to, but we're looking out for the kids. This is our community. So, you would think, and not that the school has to do anything, but at least meet us that way to say, we're going half at least, take the liability because it's the school setting. It's in front of the school. It's around the school. It's something that I think this, they should be doing anyway. They should have those people there to protect the school. We're growing. And cars are getting faster, but kids' minds are faster than the cars. It is what it is. They speed out, burn tires or whatever, and everybody's in a hurry to get nowhere fast. So, if the school can recognize the fact that we do have a problem here and not wait till somebody is tragically injured and we're willing to work, we're willing to push it, and I know you're not even here right now, sir. I'm not even addressing, I'm addressing the, the, the school, that we're trying to go as far as we can without putting ourselves too far out there. But we do want to protect the child one hundred percent.
Just to be clear, we did pass something that said we would pay for half. Is that correct?
You agreed to move forward that direction.
And we said they had to be school employees. Or that's what we wanted.
That was the desire of the council.
And it went to the school board and the school board said no.
Um, it's, no. So, I met with the superintendent to discuss a draft contract to bring back to you and that she would take to the school board. Um, and they wanted them to be city employees. So, I brought it back to you asking, do you want to approve it with them as city employees? Or do you want to squash the deal? Do you have other ideas? What do you want to do?
Okay. Okay, and basically, some of our ideals were um, doing what you said, you know, uh, uh, splitting it in half, taking it back to them in half.
Liability.
Yeah, liability. Um, could you look into maybe security guards if we, if we would hire that? Man, we would pay them half and half, you know, like go to, because we have a, we have a security guard business here in town, a couple of them, I think. And they, they're, and they, they get paid by the hour, I think. So, that'd be a possibility too. And um, just do some other brainstorming and see what you can bring up. Mary?
I'm so sorry. It's my understanding that, and I could be completely wrong, but I have discussed this also, that the reasoning for wanting the employees to be city employees rather than school employees was not having to do with the economy of it, but having to do with this direct supervisor being the city that they would answer to the law-
Correct.
And not to the school district because the school district is in charge of their safety inside and technically, legally from their house to the school. But that, that the people performing the duties would be under the police and the city's charge because they're the experts, not because they want to get out of paying their fair share. Because in my understanding and all my discussions, and I have had a few about this, this situation, is that it would be, the funding would be shared, like completely as I understood it, but maybe I'm just dumb, was that it was a fifty-fifty type thing.
It, it is for the cost. That is how it is drafted. I think what the council's concern is, is if the city were to get sued, the city would be the only entity named. It's not-
Can't you draft that somehow, Mr. Mario?
That's what I had suggested if the council was interested in that.
And then suggesting the teachers do it for free in their spare time? That, that is not an existent thing. Those teachers are on duty every spare chance. They've got yard duty. They've got lunch duties. You are not gonna squeeze thirty seconds out of another teacher, especially not with all this COVID stuff still. It's not, it's not doable.
Thank you. Okay, could, I think you have your orders. Just go back and see what you can do and see if you can share the costs.
Is that the consensus of the council?
And share the liability also, so.
And look into private options.
And to look into private, yeah. Okay. Is that good enough, guys? Okay. Um, next, we'll go to item number four. Discussion direction of potential action items regarding electrical infrastructure upgrades at downtown Plaza area.
Any questions? Sorry, the staff report was blank. We hadn't received the quotes back from the electrician. Um, so Eric met with uh, one of the local electricians here to get kind of an idea of what need to do to upgrade or to address the issue out at the, in the plaza. And so, um, after going through and looking at all the, the outlets and all the other items out in the plaza, the gazebo, that we found that there wasn't a lack of power. It was more of a lack of dedicated circuits as well as faulty GFIs throughout the plaza. So, to be brief, the recommendation, and this is all within kind of staffs and the city manager's spending power. We're kind of looking for direction just as a general scope for us to go and address this issue, is one, addressing the GFIs and replacing all twenty-five GS, GFIs in the um, in the plaza, as well as redo the electrical box at the uh, at Frame Park in the gazebo. I think it's been there since the gazebo was built and it needs a lot of work. Um, and then also providing two dedicated uh, twenty amp circuits at two designated locations. Uh, we actually met with uh, Scott um, and talked about locations for future events, where that needs to be. So, it's one outlet on one circuit rather than one, you know, one circuit on three or four outlets, which caused a lot of the problems. So, fixing the GFI issues and putting some dedicated circuits for specifically for music and for entertainment in the plaza, we feel that this is gonna resolve the problem or the issue that we, that we ran into during the um, the last event. That kind of, I imagine, drove this question uh, from Councilman Atkinson. So, right now, for those few things, we're, you know, we're looking at probably about two to three thousand dollars to do that. Um, if we do two dedicated locations that are about, probably about a thousand dollars apiece, and then for the other two items, another probably about two thousand dollars. So, between, you know, three and four thousand, uh, there's some additional work that we want to do down in the plaza to try to at least get more lights to those last two trees. But we don't have any outlets there, so we're gonna be looking at those options too. Um, with that, we're just kind of, I think at this point, we feel like we have a solution uh, to address the issue. Um, and if council's comfortable with that, we'd be more than happy to move forward with that.
All you need is direction.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, we're fine. And we, and we have, we, we have uh, the funds um, from the savings of not having the groundskeepers and our grounds and maintenance budget, we should be able to um, you know, obtain, you know, basically do this performance work.
Okay, quick question. The two dedicated, those are thirty amp, not twenty amp, correct?
They're gonna be twenty amp. They don't need thirty.
Are they gonna stay at twenty?
They'll be staying at twenty. Thirty amp requires a separate plug and everything. It won't, according to the electrician, they don't not need uh, thirty amp circuits for that, for that. We've never had issues with them before. The faulty GFIs are really what caused a lot of the problems, especially like on some of the, some of the areas. Because they're very sensitive and then if they start going bad, they get even worse.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that good? All right.
Okay, um, we'll go to item announcements, city manager's announcements.
Thank you. I have two. So, on December twenty-third, the police department and fire department will be out making their reindeer rounds. So, they go to the income-based apartment complexes and the mobile home parks with unwrapped Christmas gifts for kids. Um, so if you live in any of those areas, be on the lookout for them. And then I have uh, one additional announcement that I'm gonna hand over to Darren that he's going to announce right now.
This announcement's for the council and the public. As many of you may know, on November twenty-sixth, a former chief, police chief Cal Minor passed away after having a massive stroke. Uh, he was sent home at, at the hospital to, to uh, go in peace with his family. Uh, he passed later that evening after leaving the hospital. I've received this information from his son, Dan, uh, who also is a highway patrolman. And they are planning his funeral on Tuesday, December, or the public viewing is Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at four PM to seven PM at the following location, at the Wayland's Sanger Funeral Home located at one five, two four, Ninth Street in Sanger. Funeral services will be Wednesday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, starting at ten, ten, ten AM at the Saint Mary's Catholic Church, twenty-five nine zero, East North Avenue, Sanger. Immediately following the funeral services, there will be a procession to the Sanger Cemetery for graves, graveside services. Sanger Cemetery is located at five, six, eight, South Rainbow Avenue in Sanger, California. Anybody that would like to attend, you're more than welcome. Uh, the police department will be there in force and we will also be uh, one of the lead vehicles in the procession as well as uh, uh, honor guards at the casket at, at the, during the ceremony. So, we'll be participating in the SAT event. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any council members' reports? Okay, mayor's announcements. I have none. Um, there's a lot to do in town. We got it from uh, Sean, so.
Scott.
Our Scott, I mean. Okay.
You got a lot from Sean tonight.
It just felt that way.
Sean, I'm not picking on you. I know it. Okay, future agenda items, anybody?
Uh, speaking of crosswalks and stuff and kids getting hit by cars, I believe we had one recently in front of Big Five at that very same crosswalk that we talked about.
We just talked about.
So, I understand Caltrans is gonna redo it and I don't really care. Can we put in some kind of lighted crossing thing that we have? Use... Okay, how about you this? Bring back the cost for it at the next meeting, then we'll discuss it.
Put a crossing guard there. Can anybody else have anything? Okay, I, I just want to do something that's been done a long time ago and I just want to see how it is right now. Um, we have a, a city clock downtown and I know it was real expensive to, to fix it up and stuff like that. And it has music in it and stuff where you can do Christmas carols and stuff like that. And Oscar was about the only guy that could get it, get it working and stuff. And I wanted to see if uh, if Sean could uh, look into it to see if uh, we can maybe get that going again and stuff and get some music out of the, our clock. Cause we put a lot of money into that and it's, it's a nice clock. And so, means a lot. And we do have a, don't we, I think we still have a, a deal, um, what do you call those things? A, a timepiece inside of it, you know, down below. So, in, in so many years, we'll pick it up and find out what's happened. Um, and that's all I have.
The worst. Sean, just take your time, but hurry up.
I'll see you Monday?
Yeah. I, I got something. I'm sorry. I got something. I wanted to see if we could do some kind of ordinance of um, it's getting out of control. And I've seen people already with these uh, they're cleaning these backyards and stuff and they're illegally dumping all over the place now. Um, I, I want to see if we could find, if we find a license plate and it gets tracked, if we could put that, that fine in their city bill. Because it, it's getting out of control, out of control where it's, they're, they're dumping everywhere, not just our local thrift store, but everywhere. And it's, 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 I know there's other individuals are, are helping out somebody that they'll clean their yard, but they're, they're not, we've checked, I, I've actually checked with the Mid Valley. We've checked with the Mid Valley. They're not taking it there. And the, and these, in, in this, the community residents are help, trying to help them and they pay them to the dump fees, but they're not dumping them there. And if we could catch a license plate that they're illegally dumping and they have a residence, then if we could put it, maybe we could put it on their city bill. That, but that'll maybe give, give out the, out there to those that are dumping out anywhere, they'll get a nice little fine. Just to word out.
I don't know if we can do that. Can-
We can't discuss it, so we'll discuss it when we bring it back on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Okay, and um, we have uh, four things in a closed session. Anybody like to bring any of them up or... Okay, um, are we gonna expect any uh, thing out of closed session?
I don't, I don't expect any report out.
Okay. Okay, thank you guys for coming tonight and we'll see everybody later.